We'll call the special Cedar Springs zoning board of appeals to order, five o'clock. Please rise and recite the pledge.
I would make a pledge to the life of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Mr. Craig Owens.
He's excluded.
Yep. Mrs. Rose Allen Powell.
I'm here.
Mr. Rose. Did I again? Ms. Jill Owen.
I'm here.
Mr. Steve Schmitz, I'm here.
Public comment. We will now move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion.
How many kept motion?
None.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I will now call the vote. All those in favor say ah. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
I.
Aye. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. So make sure you just have a pause in between all those in favor, aye, pause.
Motion carries.
Then all those opposed. Gotcha.
C P.
Motion to approve agenda. Men. Moving on to approval of the minutes of the February fifth twenty five, twenty twenty five meeting, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I would make that motion.
Hey, second up.
Is there any discussion? Hearing now, I will now call the vote. All those in favor say?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the minutes of the February fifth twenty twenty five meeting. Conflicts of interest and ex parte communication inquiry. Are there any conflicts of interest and ex parte communication that needs to be reported?
Not from me.
Me either.
I'm here.
New business, a none? Any other business? Moving on to the variance request for twenty nine Oak Street, Cedar Springs, Michigan, four nine three one nine. Mrs. Falcon or Mr. Moore, would you like to begin discussion?
Sandy Mark to join us tonight. He's our city planner. Um, he supplied the staff report from the last meeting. Um, he has been made aware of all the new, the new packet, so turn the phone.
So we have some time to.
Seen this once already, right? You've.
Correct.
With the application. Um, so what they're asking for, as you know, is to replace an existing open carport type of structure on the west side of, of, of the building. Because there is a required setback on that side. They have requested a variance. I think ten foot is the required setback there. I wasn't sure based on the aerial photo, it looked like it was maybe one or two. Looks like it could be three or four, looking at the, at the, at the stakes that are in the ground. But nevertheless, it's not ten feet. So that's why they're asking for a variance. Um, in order to grant a variance, the zoning board has to find that there are several standards, all of which must be satisfied. So in your packets on page, I'm not sure what page of the packet I'm on. I'm keen of your packet. There's a, there's a memo from me. So it's the, it's the one with the Williams and Works header on it. Um, so we could just kind of walk through and give you some background on the application. And then, um, at the bottom of page one, it says to grant a variance, the Z B A must find that all of the following standards are met. And so on the following pages, numbered standards, one, two, there's, I think, six of them. Yeah, six of them that we give you a little bit of analysis for on, on each page. So I will give you the. Please, just so you understand what those standards mean and what you should be looking for. And then what I think you should do is kind of go through each one and as a group, determine whether each of those standards has been satisfied or not. So the first one asks if there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not apply generally to other properties in the same district. Such as exceptional narrowness, shallowness or shallowness or shape of a specific property. Exceptional topographic conditions, so like steep slopes or something. Um, by reason of the use or development of property immediately adjoining the property in question. Um, or any other physical situation of the land building or structure deemed by the Z B A to be extraordinary. So here we're looking for, we're asking, is there something unique about either the property itself? Whether it's the shape or the land, or if there is something unusual or different about property that's, that's directly adjacent to it or, or surrounding it. It causes a difficulty in complying with the ordinance. Number two asks if the condition is, uh, it says, uh, the, the condition or situation of the property is not of so recurrent, general or recurrent in nature as to make practical the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions. What that means in plain English is, is this something that happens all the time and we should just amend the ordinance to address it? Or is this a unique circumstance that doesn't really come up very much? The thought process with number two is that if it were a recurrent thing that you, that you see a lot as, as a, as a zoning board, you would perhaps ask the planning commission, hey, take a look at this. We get a lot of requests for this type of application. That's what this is asking for. Three, such a variance is necessary for the preservation of enjoyment of a substantial property right similar to that possessed by other properties in the same district. Noting that the possibility of increased financial returns shall not, it's of itself deemed to be sufficient to warrant a variance. So again, are they, are they deprived of some use of their property? Or are they being deprived of the ability to make some improvement to their property that everybody around them enjoy? Um, number four asks if the variance would be, would be significantly detrimental to adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood. But impair the intent and purpose of this chapter, this chapter being the zoning ordinance. Number six, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the request was not created by any affirmative action of the applicant. So did the applicant do something to put themselves in this predicament? So to kind of walk through our thoughts on these, so I'm going to jump back up to the first one. Are, um, are there exceptional or extraordinary circumstances? The property itself is, is pretty typical in, in terms of its size and shape. Um, we do note that directly west of this property is a city owned property, right? That's where the park is. So one of the things that is a little bit different about this that I think helps the applicant is that, there isn't like a house that's too. Right, so, you know, I don't know that that really arises to, to the level of being an extra, an exceptional or an extraordinary circumstance, but to us that was, that was interesting. Um, number two. This is the one that asks, should, should we just amend the zoning ordinance instead? You know, this is, property is zone B three, other surrounding properties are also zone B three. So it could make more sense to, or it could make sense to rezone this property and some others to a residential district. But even if we did that to make it, you know, to make it conforming from Mulaney's perspective, it doesn't fix the variance problem, right? It doesn't fix the setback. And even if you rezone it to, to a separate district, they still wouldn't be able to comply with that, with that ten foot setback here. Um, and so far as I'm aware, and I've only been the planner here for a few couple, three years now, this isn't something that we've come across before. So you guys would know better than me, but I'm not aware of this being a recurrent issue. I'm not aware of this being something that you've dealt with multiple times before. Uh, if it is, if you, this is the 10th time that you've seen this, then, you know, let me know and we can talk about that. The third one, if it's necessary for the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right. So the applicant here states that that provides him a, a protected area to park their vehicles. Um, placement of that carports anywhere else on the property is probably not feasible, given the size of the house and the size of, of, of the parcel. Uh, we also do note however, that the, that this, the house on the property already contains a, a single stall garage. Uh, most houses in the neighborhood don't contain carports. They just have either no garage or they have an attached garage of, 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 of some kind. So, you know, I think it's debatable to say that this is a substantial property right that is possessed by others in the district because not everyone else has one of these things. If people. We were talking about something that everybody else has or could have, then that might change a little bit. Um, but this is one that we would question a little bit because we're not sure that, you know, this would be the deprivation of a property right that a lot of other people in that area have. Number four, whether the variance would be significantly detrimental to adjacent property and the surrounding neighborhood. One of the things here that's, that's a little interesting is that they're not, this is simply replacing an existing carport that's in rough shape with the new one. So this, you know, could be seen as an improvement to the neighborhood, right? Cause they're going to add on something or they're going to replace something that's in, that's in fairly poor condition with something that's going to be in much better condition because it'll be brand new. So we did also here, we asked for, uh, some kind of a survey or suggested some kind of a survey so we can get a, get, get, get a better feel for how far that, that property is away. Um, we did see in the packet, there are some photographs attached that show the stakes on there. Um, I drove by the property. I, I didn't see a stake in the front yard, but I did see a stake in the rear yard, which looks like it's about two to three feet or so off of the edge of that carports. Um, and there are photographs attached in the packet that, that, that show where the front yard stake was. Um, number five, would it impair the intent and purpose of the chapter? Um, yeah, to me, by itself, probably not. You know, the concern that we always have as a planner with variance requests is that, um, if, if we start, if the city starts granting variances without justifying them very well, then, you know, you're going to feel to grant, feel it necessary, or if you're going to feel like you need to grant more of them. And pretty soon you're just going to find yourself, well, we granted this ones, we should probably grant this one, and we granted that ones, we should also grant this one. So I would encourage you to, um, you know, be judicious in how you grant these things. Um, this one might seem minor, but the next one might be not so minor, and it might have a much bigger impact. Um, and I wouldn't want you to feel like you've pigeonholed yourself into, well, we have to grant this one because we did this for these other applicants. Um, and then the last one was the need of, for the variance granted by the applicant. I would say, no, they didn't put the original carport there in the first place. Um, and again, they're not seeking to expand or to add on to anything. They didn't put the house there, they didn't create a lot of that size. So this does not strike me as a self-created hardship here. Um, that carport has been there for at least seventeen years, probably a lot, a lot longer than that. That was as far back as I was able to go just on mapping tools. So it's been there for a while. Um, and there isn't any other place that one could reasonably place something like this on the property. You'd have to, you know, put it in the backyard or something like that, which isn't really realistic, so. So those are, are, are the six standards along with my thoughts. Um, my suggestion for you would be to talk about ea- each one and at least come to a consensus on number one, come to a consensus on number two, kind of, and just kind of go through all six. Um, if the consensus on any of these standards, just one of them, if, if the consensus on any one of them is a no, then you would not be able to approve it. And your decision would have to be to, to, to deny the request because it doesn't satisfy all standards. Got to satisfy all six in order to grant it. Are there any questions for me about anything that's either in my, my report here or?
Didn't, was there a survey done?
I thought was submitted as.
So, yeah, there wasn't like a printed survey. There were some stakes put in the ground, so I guess we can let the applicant speak to that more specifically about what they had done.
Put stakes in.
He's been.
Yeah. We had a survey done, uh, by a gentleman from Sand Lake. Yeah, we had a survey done.
By a guy from Sand Lake who came out and did it like a couple of months ago. So he just placed stakes. Phil is my name. Veditich. So. I can produce that email, I believe, if it's not already around.
None was submitted to me.
Oh, okay.
Just the pictures.
I'm looking that up right now.
I guess my other question is, what is, I couldn't find any measurements on the existing carport.
Right here.
Existing carport.
Which, which page? Eighteen, seventeen. And sixteen. Drawings.
Of the existing one? I found one. Pictures of the planned one, but not the measurements of the former, or the one that's there now. Fifteen and sixteen?
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen. So that's not the plan for the new one? That's the one that exists as it is?
Seventeen?
Yeah, seventeen. One square.
Represent how many feet?
On plan that they submitted, so each one of the squares is one foot. So it comes out to be in about eleven by twenty-four, eleven by twenty-four and a half, something like that.
Does measure, I, I went and measured it.
The existing ones, eleven by twenty-four?
I guess the applicant could speak to this more.
Okay.
Posts that come down from the carport there, they're sitting on that, on that concrete wall there. So I'm assuming that expanding that outward to the, what, west even by six inches would probably be problematic. So I'm assuming that it's going to be basically the exact same thing in the exact same location. I guess, again, the applicant can address that more directly.
Now, the posts are sitting on a, on concrete blocks. So in order to get down below the frost line, I've been to just move like between twelve and eighteen inches to the west. And then that way we can get down to the frost line, so.
So it would be, so it would be slightly larger than the, than its current size by a foot and a half, maybe?
Maximum eighteen inches, yeah. But we would, we would try to hug the, um, the inside as much as possible, so.
Longer?
No, no, same length, yep.
So with the picture where the holes currently are, you're just going to go on the outside of that block and drill down?
Yep.
Will you measure for how much?
It's just going to be right.
It's long. Yeah. Go down in there.
Doesn't show you that in that picture, but that's what it is.
Best I could figure on the drawings was sixteen, eleven by sixteen foot by the, for the new one, but I couldn't figure on the existing one. The covered part was how I was trying to figure it out.
So the exceptional, Andy, the exceptionally extraordinary circumstances being that this has been there for so long. And it's just being replaced, is that considered an exceptional or extraordinary circumstance? Structure has been, it's because it's replacing an existing structure.
Says, I mean, this is where I can give you a really annoying answer by say exceptional circumstances or whatever you determine to be exceptional or extraordinary in your opinion as the Z B A. Um, I, you know, so the, the ordinance says circumstances or conditions applying to the land or property in question. So to me, this standard is more about the physical characteristics of the land or the lot line. So I guess the lot is abnormally narrow or if it's a funny shape, or if there's a really steep slope in the background or something like that, that basically makes it nearly impossible for them to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Or a crack.
Right.
Exactly. So on one hand here, you could, so there's, there's two ways of thinking about this. One is that if you were to determine that a carport is necessary, then you could say, yes, this is the only logical place that you could put one. Cause there's no other place to put it.
Place.
Yeah. But you could also say that it's possible to just comply with the ordinance by not having a carport there in the first place. Cause you don't, it's not something that's so, and again, this is just based on driving around the airport a little bit. It's not something that's so common that everybody has one. And so that's where we get into that, that later standard where we're talking about, you know, a substantial property right that's possessed by others in the neighborhood and all that. You know? If you're not denying somebody a substantial property right, then it's, it's reasonable to find that they can just comply and just not have one at all. This, that's the, that's the flip side of that, that train of thought.
I did notice, uh, their current garage, the dimensions of that are, uh, well, if they had a truck, that wouldn't fit in there. And then they also have, um, some like, there's a door that's about hip height or so, and then some stairs up to it. So if they were trying to park the car in there, I don't think it would really work well for them. So just as a side note.
I have a question. So without a doubt, we know that that's been there for many years. And in, and in all actuality, they want to do maintenance. And it does need it. So by reading this, it's like if, I don't know, I, I, I feel like a trap.
Yeah.
So what do I tell them? No, you can shrink it. You got four foot, so if you take six feet off of it, then you could have a mini carport and you, you can't drive a golf cart in town.
Yeah, I mean, you could, so, I mean, you're right. So one of the challenges, so let's say if the garage is too small, right? And so I'm, I'm looking at the, there's a, it's like on Google street view, there is a garage, so the carport butts up next to the garage, right? So, I mean, it's part of, part of, and part of your question is then determining whether or not this is a reasonable thing to suggest or, or to require. But I'm just going to put it out there for you guys to think about. Could, in theory, if you disallow the carport, they could expand the garage to the west by probably three or four feet and enlarge that up to a sufficient width that would be able to accommodate a car. Now that's likely to be a significantly increased cost to them as opposed to the carport, right? So that's, that's the part that you would have to weigh on your own as to whether or not that's a reasonable or practical thing to ask. Cause when we're talking about variances, we're, it's, we're talking about a practical difficulty, right? Is it practical to require that they do that? And that's what you have to figure out.
To me, that seems like an impractical requirement.
Yeah, then.
Right. The cost of expanding the garage versus this is night and day to me.
Yeah, to me, that's, I'm the same in there.
I don't, I don't know what, probably, I don't, I don't know what the costs are to expand the garage versus this. I would assume that, yeah, it would be, it would seem substantially more expensive because you have to.
Being four poles and. Correct, correct.
So, and you guys, you guys are doing, want to do this carport as part of his overall roof too, right? Cause this is part of that roof extension, right?
Decided to wait on the roof until we could figure out, uh, what to do with this. Yeah, I did know, I found out from my email, uh, that it was Bryant Land Serving that did it. Zeb Bryant. So he came by and did that. I, somebody mu- must have like taken the, the one stake or something or moved it or something, but that was done.
The front too.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Same, but the stake in the back has not been messed with. But, I mean.
Can you address?
Garage, we, I don't know, I'm pretty sure he would say, the owner would say no to that. Um, just because of the cost. So he's trying to do this in the way that is the least expensive, so.
Kind of makes sense to put the, if it's attached to the house, heart of the roof there.
So at our last meeting, our, in our draft, we, um, requested specific plans, which you did pretty good. Materials, pretty good, and survey. So we don't have the survey.
So what we, what we paid for, for the, um, the survey to do was just to stake it, not to create like a full-blown.
One side of the property, to show where that property line was.
Dollars to stake all four corners. And then he'd have to take time to work up like a PDF of what like, you know, the geo-location of each, each place. And we really just needed a sightline down the west end to see how, how many few, uh, we are away from the line, which is what we can tell from the pictures. So it, it was just to give certainty on that.
And so part of, so that, that was something that we had looked at with the pre, prior to the previous meeting. And one of the questions was, you know, whether or not it's two feet away or three feet away or six inches away, doesn't matter a whole lot. I just don't want it to be.
The other way.
projecting onto another property. That obviously wouldn't be acceptable. So this does provide clarity with that, that this, the, the carport in its current location, or if they moved it, you know, a foot to the west to get this post into the ground. That's not going to encroach onto the city's property on that west side.
And I think that's what we're asking for.
On the west side, as far as what, what the dimensions were.
Yeah, I think that's what we asked for, was clarification on that line.
We want a clarification.
On the west side. Correct.
At least I couldn't approve this without some proof that the city has of this survey that was taken, submitted to the city.
Say the, I mean, I took pictures of the, where the stakes are lined up next to the house. And it's pretty, I mean, it's clear from the photos that it's.
And that's great, except for when, if these folks move out, there has to be some proof, records that the survey was done and this is where the line is and this is, this is, yeah.
And I, I think, uh, from the little that I know of, uh, real estate transactions, those are usually something that a seller can require, um, before a sale happens.
That email, I think what she's asking is that email you got, that's something you can provide to the city? Cause that's got official documentation that the survey was done for this, at those spots.
Emails with Zeb, so. Zeb Bryant. So. Zeb Bryant, so. Yep.
I don't know.
I guess we better ask city manager and planner.
So, I mean, so you're right, so when, when property is sold, there typically is a, a survey involved those often, so, but they don't, they don't always go and get them re-surveyed every single time. So if you go buy a house, yeah, they'll give you a survey, a survey, but it was a survey from nineteen eighty-five or something. And there's, I don't know that there's a mechanism to worse that issue unless either the seller or the buyer makes that a contingency of their offer or acceptance or whatever, right? So, um, for, for me, um, my concern was that both the existing and proposed carport are fully on their own property. Yet, whether or not it's two feet or four feet honestly doesn't make that much of a difference. So as long as you have enough, to me, if I were, if I were in your shoes, if you have enough information to be comfortable, you know, in your own mind, feeling that, yes, we have the information here that confirms that this is on, this is, is and will be completely on their property, and I think you would have enough to move forward to make a decision. Um, in terms of sort of tracking the moving forward, um, all of this is going to become part of the file for this particular property. Um, so if a transfer affidavit comes into the city or, or, or something like that, there will be a record of, hey, there is a variance here. Um, it would be considered conforming, not non-conforming, because a variance basically makes it legal if you were to grant one. Um, so there wouldn't be any like major future headaches in terms of zoning, because there's, your, the city would be granting explicit permission for this to be you know, constructed the way that it is.
So. So I know Zeb Bryant, he is a full-time surveyor. And, and I did see these stakes too, and I went over and measured and have looked at this multiple times. So I'm like you, that I, I, they're on their property. There's not, there's not ten feet, but they are in their property.
Yeah, it's like there's maybe three or four at the street, and it looks like it narrows down to maybe two feet towards the end.
Gets tight in the back and it's wider out front.
Okay.
Let's make fun, if it's down by the creek.
Yes, in the back, but, but if, if you look at the picture, it's considerably wider out front than it is in the back. In the back, it's like three feet. Because I had, I was out there checking it, but then I was sighting it and I'm going that way. It, because it, things have to be dress like dress, and it, so it is, it sits not like you think it would sit in that property.
Every with the, the original road and the railroad and all that stuff in the creek.
Everything gets.
Pattywampus.
So the whole, you know, everything shifts, but.
Exactly.
Okay, where are we at here?
Questions, I guess, for these days?
I, uh, I think we need a document that says that, yes, indeed, this was the prop, this, the property line and for future references. Too much more.
I don't have here. Um, because the, um, it's not actual, in the actual footprint, it's a little bit to the west. And it's the same length, correct?
As the old one, as the former, as the one that's there now, same length?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely, same length, that's correct.
Twenty-four foot, no, no problem. And, um, I know it, it is a special circumstances, and I'm sure somebody just slapped it in there without asking anybody anything. You, and people buy it and they think, well, they're that's okay, but.
To me, when I'm looking at this picture here, um, I'm seeing, you know, the hedge trees. Don't know what they're called, but that the city's got put up there as their barrier, which is another four feet or so on the other side of the property line. Well. Um, and they have a good amount there, and since it is replacing an existing structure, and it is just bringing that structure to code, basically, to help improve it. I don't, I don't see a problem with it. Um, I, you know, we have picture documentation and, um, you can always forward that email on to the city, so that they have that for records sake. Um, but our biggest concern at our last meeting was that where's the line at so that we can see it? Um. And yeah, that's, that's where my thoughts are with it.
If we do decide to approve this, can we make a contingent on the documents being provided by the?
By the surveyor? For the survey rules, is that what you're saying? Okay.
If you want to.
I would think it's absolutely necessary, just for the future. In case somebody comes in and.
Yeah, right now, even if you wanted to, right?
I'm just gonna say, he sent you that.
And he said, this is where the line is, this is, we plotted it, you know, so there is.
Can you just, uh, get the document and bring it in and have it certified?
Only one and three other ones.
Well, I think that could be.
I don't, I don't. And you said something about you didn't know if we could require that or something? I, I, I don't know if I'm mishearing what you said.
If you were to approve it, you can absolutely, as a condition of approval, require, you could add conditions to a yes vote on this, so if you said guess we'll approve it subject to you providing a, I mean, even if it's a full-on complete survey, shows the boundaries with the house and the location of the new carport with setbacks, wanted to add, attach that as a condition of approval, you can do that.
Or just the west side.
The reason we only did the west side was because none of the other sides are involved in, in this part of the process.
So, so number, standard number one, exceptional or extraordinary circumstance. Can, the zoning administrator, I'm just trying to get on the same page. What, in your opinion, is the exceptional or extraordinary circumstance? That you can say yes to number one, there is an extraordinary or exceptional circumstance, what would that be?
I think it is because of the longevity of it being there. And the extraordinary circumstances, they have to bring it up to code, with it sitting on top of the bricks, it's not down to the frost barrier, so it provides a safety thing. It provides a more safe structure. So. Agree with that? Other extraordinary circumstances that you want to add to that?
No backyard. Well, place to, uh.
Yeah, there's no other place that I've seen that you could put it.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Instruct, so.
So number two, the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature?
We don't have many properties that are close to their property line like this in, in town. With the city property on the other side, you know, that's I don't think it's a, a usual circumstance, this is a one-off, one-off item that we're gonna come across, and everything's treated a case-by-case basis.
I, I, I agree. There's no building on the, that side, if there was a building on that side, you have to have that variance to get fire trucks and so forth in, keeping from burning another house down.
Taking the setback, you mean, you need ten feet, yeah, if there was a building next door.
All we have to worry about is some bushes.
Yeah, because even the monuments are quite a distance.
Yeah, they're quite a, quite a distance away.
Cause a hazard for another person, business, in my opinion.
Sounds like this is not something that you've ever, or at least not, not recently, in the last, I don't know how long you've all been on the ZBA, but it's been two years, it hasn't, isn't something that comes up there? Okay.
Except deal for wolves a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
We straightened up them driveways.
Right, that was the last one.
So number three, such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property, property right?
Yeah, I mean, it's how he's using the property right now is how he wants to continue to use it.
And it needs maintenance with the rest of it. Without, so by renewing it, it's gonna be a lot better piece of property than it was.
And the property would be fine, he could still use it.
But my feelings are, it's been there for probably close to twenty years.
Yep, yep.
It is on their property, and there is a setback, it isn't what you want. But there's nothing and I would rather see that property improved than to have it in disarray. I mean, it would make it look better to the park. That happens if it doesn't get fixed and then it's laying there and then.
Well, eventually code enforcement would say, remove it. Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to get to the point where somebody could possibly get injured from, from it happening. And which is going by the frost level is going to increase that.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
There, I also just wanted to reiterate that the garage that they have is not, it does not work to park a, a car in there. They've got.
That has no bearing on this, we, we don't care what's inside the house.
Well, I just was mentioning that because, um, it, it was mentioned that everyone else, or a lot of other homes have, um, a garage.
Right.
And they'll park in the garage, but like.
Not feasible.
I don't know if you've ever seen in the garage, but it's not great for accessibility, like their, their door has these stairs that go down and get in the way of parking a car and maneuvering and, so.
Thank you, Phil.
Okay, can we keep going, number four? The variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property and surrounding neighborhoods.
Let's discuss that, like what you said with the, there's nothing next to it besides bushes.
The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this chapter?
No, I don't think it's causing any harm.
Well, difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by the applicant.
Which we had discussed before it's been there. For a long time. So I think we met all six standards.
Collectively are finding that all six standards are met, then it would be appropriate to have somebody make a motion to approve the variance, and then if any desired conditions, you want to attach any conditions to that motion?
Do you want to make that motion?
I, just so he doesn't, they, you don't go beyond, uh, the twelve inches from that wall that you planned, twelve to eighteen inches, you said would be a little bit wider, where your posts have to go to avoid the cement. You gonna tear out that cement, or is it just gonna stay there like that?
The plan was to leave the, the cement.
And we get a certified document from that surveyor before I could, before I could approve it.
I did send an email with, with communications between myself and the, and Zeb Bryant. Uh, can't say that it, it's got any formal seal of, uh, a post deal or whatever, but, um, it does show that he went, and it says what, uh, distance he thought it was off the property line and.
Someone that actually put the post there.
Yeah, and one would presume, uh, that, I believe it was a technician went out there and did it, so.
Would be acceptable? That would be acceptable?
Looking for.
I'd like proof that
they did it.
He did it, and maybe he's got some pictures or drawings or some kind of record.
Our business bank account just shows that we paid for it, I mean.
We need a document, yeah.
I guess there's two things you could do, is one, so I'm not sure what's in the email, but if it shows, if it's from the surveyor that says, yes, I was there, you know, the carport presently is X number of feet off of the property line. That's in there, so that's, you could accept that, otherwise, the other option would be to have them prepare a, a survey, an actual survey of at least that part of the property in print, and have him stamp it and provide it to the city, that's going to take some time and cost them some more money to have that prepared, but that would be the other. That, I think, is probably more what you're thinking about, but.
The future. An invoice that actually documents the job and the findings might be adequate. Proof.
Now, Phil, if you get something, you, you said you paid the bill, there must have been some invoices that said this is what we did.
He did that, and then he said he got the, um, email back and forth between them and how they did it and approached it.
Oh, we did, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I will have to, I could, well, I could call Zeb later, tomorrow, and just ask him to give me a, a summary. And then just, um, I can, uh, CC the city manager on that.
But directed right to Darla.
Yeah.
As you approve that, Darla? Darla says yes, I say yes. We're not ready yet.
So.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we, uh, approve the variance request for, sorry, don't have the address. Forty-nine Oak Street.
And that, based on, based on Zeb Bryant contacting Darla?
Yes.
And meeting her approval of that.
West line, of the west line.
Documentation that us, that they were there to provide a survey of the west line.
Suggestion to your motion, if you're willing to amend it, is just to include at the standards of section.
Six of the, six standards, so I don't know what their standards are, what are they called?
Uh, the, I don't actually have the number in here, so yeah, just, uh, that it satisfies the variance review standards of the zoning ordinance.
That's right here, that's a six.
Three-two-four-seventy-four.
Oh, this is on his, his paper, it's on us.
Yeah, here it comes.
Nineteen.
Yes.
Yep, that's correct. As long as that's in the minutes, that's all I want, yeah, thank you.
Completed.
And no.
Yes.
No more twelve inches with them new poles.
Twelve to eighteen.
Well, you said twelve to eighteen, but if, if worst come to worst, they could cut right through that and get their forty-two inch. Yes.
Yeah.
Right through them block. That'll auger up.
Yeah, I think they should, auger bigger before they get
Yeah.
Put it in there and move it back.
If you, if you cut right here, it wouldn't have to be up to that far, and they could get down through that. And that would keep this all in the line, all of it, their fence, everything. Okay?
So.
So we have our motion?
Let me repeat that for you, please. Thank you. Uh, hoping to approve for twenty-nine Oak Street. Through the survey and then satisfy the standard of section.
Everybody.
Our chapter twenty, chapter thirty-two, one oh three B, one through six, and it must be within eighteen, twelve to eighteen inches of the.
I read it, right? Good.
So. All right, I'm good.
I'll second that motion.
And I got to see. You haven't read the vote. We, we're past discussion, huh? So are there for math? So we've done this.
Well, yeah, we made a motion to approve.
Proven by, so we have to take the proposed motion to motion to approve or deny the variance request for Andy Myers at twenty-nine Street, seated, brains.
Stuff we went through.
Request.
They discussed right here, there you are.
Is there any discussion?
I, I really think it was a difficult decision. It's, it was, but I think it was fair to citizens and, um, that bought a house that thought they had a thing that, a building that was okay, and an addition on it that was okay, it was probably snuck in there at some time. Now they want to improve it and make it look good, so that's the positive part. And, um, that's all I can say.
Hearing none, I will now call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Seeing no additional business, without any objection, I will now adjourn the meeting at
Five fifty-four.
Five fifty-four. PM.